Okay, let's have the meeting come to order, please. Town of Lee, right to know law, meeting checklist, the chairman of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. According to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive over 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the town of Lee's website at leenewhampshire.org. If anybody has a problem with the access, please call 603-659-5414. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting should be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law, turning the meeting over to the chairman of the ABC.
Okay, begin with the roll call vote. Julie Glover.
Present and Joanne Clancy is in the building.
Scott Bugbee.
I'm here and I'm the only one.
Pat Barber.
I'm here, I'm alone.
John Lacourse.
I'm here and I'm alone.
Rebecca Hawthorne.
Here, Joe St. George is in the building, wandering around.
Ruth Eifert. She is muted.
I'm here and my husband is in the apartment.
Okay, Stacy Waits.
I'm here and alone.
Corin Blomquist.
I'm here and alone.
Carrie Brown. Muted and video.
We were able to see him last night, he was there.
Carrie Brown. Are you alone? Are you present? Are you? Carrie, yours is muted. Anyone? What do we do? Go on?
Nope.
Yes, we do.
Tom Redock. Alone, here and alone. Okay. Julie, I guess you're up?
Yep, so you should see the budget in front of you. There isn't really anything to say about the Board of Selectmen department. There's no increases, no decreases. Financial administration, the increase to the accounting assistant wages. Back in March, I think it was March, April, the deputy town clerk tax collector took on the role also of the part-time accounting assistant, which made her a full-time employee. That included a pay increase, although no increase to the number of hours working in the finance department. But that's why there's a slight increase in the wages there. And then the other small decreases just are trying to reflect the anticipation of reduced costs in those areas. The IT, the $4,000 increase in new equipment is because our IT consultant indicated that we were going to probably need to get a new server sometime in that fiscal year. So that's where the increase comes from. Assessing just a very slight increase as we move into another year of the contract. Legal expenses, no changes. Personnel is where we obviously see the big changes. The health insurance went up by 9%, which is the largest increase that we have seen, I think, in a very long time. In addition to that, we had, as I mentioned, the part-time town clerk tax collector and part-time account assistant becoming a full-time position entitled that individual to benefits. We also had an employee move from having the buyout to a health insurance plan. And then that $83,000 also includes the costs for another full-time police officer. So dental insurance essentially, the rate did not change. There might have been a slight change again because we're adding essentially two full-time employees. The retirement system, we also got hit with large increases. The group one, which are the municipal employees, retirement system contribution for the town went up by 25.9%. Police went up by 19.2% and fire went up by 9.7%. So that, again, coupled with the new proposed new police officer is why you're seeing such large increases there. $148,914 represents over 50% of the entire increase for the proposed fiscal '22 budget. The government building, the large increase that you see, the $50,000 or the anticipated expense is related to the lease of the daily building. We obviously know what the lease costs are going to be, but the rest of it is a bit of a wag. We did try to get some information from the building owner relative to the previous tenants, heating bills, electric bills. They had a lot more employees and a lot more computers. So, and we pay less for our propane. So in any event, this is our best guesstimate is what those costs are going to be for fiscal '22. Other than that, there are some slight changes to this budget. The electricity and the heat were both reduced in anticipation of these, this building being mostly empty. Although there have been a couple of different groups in town, town departments that have indicated an interest in using both this building and the annex. So we'll have to see what happens with the electricity and the heat should that come to pass. The insurance for property liability, our guaranteed maximum rate went up a bit, mostly because they increased the amount of the appraisal on the town buildings and also whenever payroll costs go up, that impacts the property liability insurance. You already have seen all of the social service agency requests. I'll just remind you that Lambrey Healthcare is no longer in the transportation business and that's what the funding was for. So that's why that's been taken out. Welfare, I reduced a couple of the budgets just to reflect what we typically spend in a given year. Thankfully, even though we've been living with COVID and all of the ramifications of it for nine months, we have not seen a significant increase in the expenses for general assistance. Whether that will continue past the first of the year is kind of anybody's guess. And then, of course, the bonds, the principal payment remains the same and every year the interest costs are reduced. So that's a quick overview. I guess at this point I'll field questions.
Julie, can you go over and explain why it's only $50,000 for the daily building? I know the answer, but can you?
Sure. So we received permission from the Department of Revenue Administration to spend $125,000 out of the unassigned fund balance to fund the costs associated with fitting out the building and the 12 months worth of lease costs. Now, we thought the lease was going to start September 1st. That date keeps moving. So when you look at this chart and you look at fiscal '22, there are five months labeled UFB because those costs can be paid out of the unassigned fund balance and don't come out of the operating budget. And as I said before, you know, the ever-source and propane costs are a bit of a wag.
So the $50,000 for fiscal '22 is just to, you know, build out our space in that building?
No, actually, the build-out is coming out of the $125,000 from the unassigned fund balance. That money, all the bills haven't been paid, but that work has already taken place. The $50,000 represents the lease payments and the costs to be in the building for the alarm system, the electricity and the propane. That's why some of those costs were reduced for this building in the operating budget. Because presumably we won't be here all day, five days a week, and there wouldn't be a need for so much electricity and heat. But again, as I said, if someone takes over the building, that's going to change. This building, that's going to change.
Just as an FYI, the rent is $5,000 a month. So really, annual cost for that is going to be $60,000, not the $50,000. So just bear that.
Correct, yep. But not in fiscal '22 for the reasons I explained.
Right. And then there's, what is in the, if the lease renews, there's the escalation clause?
Yes.
I don't remember how much it is, but.
Right. I think it goes up by $5,000 a year?
Are we going to realize any benefit in terms of a decrease in, you know, maintenance by moving? Or are we still thinking that the maintenance costs are going to be the same even though we're going to be primarily in that new building?
Maintenance for which building?
I guess, I don't know, I'm just looking at the first line item in government buildings, maintenance wages part-time?
Yeah, that's going to stay the same. We are going to try to continue to take care of all of the buildings with no increase in staff.
That includes the new daily building?
Correct.
Julie, we'll have a presentation from the planning board about the CIP, but there's two funds on the last page that they don't deal with, the accrued benefits and also the reevaluation. Can you give us your estimate in terms of what you think we should be putting in both of those funds for fiscal '22?
Sure, well fiscal '21, or 2021, I should say, we're actually going to be conducting the revow. So some or all of that money is going to be taken out of the revow capital reserve fund. So we're going to be starting from scratch. I think this is going to be a good year. We've been getting, the past two revows, we got very inexpensively. And it will be interesting to see what the bids come in. They're due early December. It'll be interesting to see what the bids come in this year. And then we'll know. So we will know in time to be able to know what we're going to have to put into that fund.
Okay, good. And accrued benefits?
Acquired benefits, we've just been putting $15,000 a year in. I think we estimate that that's what our potential liability could be every year.
Okay.
We've been pretty good with that. We haven't got hit with any great amount, so. We should still be good by putting $15,000 in.
Julie, you mentioned a new server. Could you tell me which line item that is going to be reflected in again? I'm sorry, I missed it when you said it the first time.
Sure, that's okay. It is, let me get up here.
Is that computer hardware, new equipment?
Yes, computer hardware, new equipment.
Okay, and so I guess what, what are we considering? Software support services, could you talk a little bit about that line item for $18,000?
Sure. The spreadsheet for everything. So here you can see what the software support services consist of. The assessing software system, costs associated with emails, the website, off-site cloud storage, website hosting, and we did the website upgrade already, so that's why you've seen those costs drop off. And then Tyler Technologies, which is our financial software. So that's what those, that's what those costs are comprised of.
Your budget pays for the highway internet connection?
Correct.
Why? Shouldn't that be in?
Historically, that's just how the budget happened. Karen's, the planning and zoning runs off a cable under the parking lot, so she doesn't have a carrying cost for that, it's on the town hall. And then police and fire have such special needs for their internet connections that they started picking those costs up a number of years ago.
And the transfer station pays for its?
And weirdly, the transfer station pays for its own, yep.
I would suggest, can we move that? And I know it's just logistics, but that would allow us to say how much it costs to run the highway department? If you, I don't know if you can do it for '22. I don't necessarily suggest you do it for '21, but in '22, can you do that?
Yep. Yep.
Julie, I have a couple of questions on health insurance and retirement.
I know, you always do.
I always do, I always do. It looks, based on what you're saying for expenses, I would imagine the majority of that $86,000, if only 3%, if 9% of it is an increase, that's about $25,000, $27,000. So the rest of it is the impact of the new police officer and having.
There's three things, three, four things that impacted it? Hold on, the 9% increase, the proposed new police officer, an employee moving from the buyout to a family plan, and then adding the newly created full-time position, even though it's not a new person. We took two part-time jobs and turned them into one full-time job.
Okay. I know I asked this last time and I don't know if anybody knows an answer to it yet. Are we looking at adding anybody in the fire department, do we know yet? Because that isn't reflected in there.
I'm sure he wants to, but there isn't anything in the budget for it yet.
Okay, do you have this same breakout for the retirement?
In terms of what each person or cost?
Well, how much the impact of the new people is versus the impact of the changes in the rates?
You know, you caught me. I don't know that I have a, I don't know that I have a spreadsheet for that.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I take that back. So this is the cost for the new, for the new patrol officer.
Okay.
So with a $46,000 salary, almost, you know, $15,584 is for the retirement system.
Now, is the new position that's for the town clerk for Liz, is she eligible for retirement as well?
Yes.
But at a different rate?
But it is, correct, at a different rate.
Okay.
Yeah, at a different rate.
Now, the impact of possibly changing the status of the library position, is that in your budget as well?
No, that's in the library budget. But as a matter of fact, if you took a deep dive into the spreadsheet that I sent you today that was the entire budget, that includes the new, all of the new insurance rates. So all of the guaranteed maximum rates, which we only just fairly recently got. And then Ruth pointed out that she's retiring at the end of the year, which is halfway through the fiscal year. So when we calculated the costs, we were acting as if she was going to be replaced for an entire fiscal year. So we made the adjustment to those numbers.
Okay. But the retirement, any retirement plan contribution for the conversion to a full-time position in the library is in their budget, not this budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So Julie, for what you're showing us here on your screen right now, you're assuming the most expensive medical plan at $25,000 for this person? We don't know if that's what they would actually choose if they were to be hired.
Right, we don't know that's what they would choose, but that's how we budget.
Okay. And the medical buyout, just so I understand, is if somebody opts out of our offered medical plan? Like maybe if their spouse has a plan that they can be under? Okay.
Correct. The buyout, the cost is 40% of the cost of the single plan. So, and they get paid that quarterly, I think.
How many people do we have who take advantage of that buyout?
We now have, I think we now have four people who take advantage of the health insurance buyout. One, two, three. No, maybe it's only three now. Yep, it's only three. That was the other difference. The police department administrative assistant was replaced with someone who I think took the health insurance.
Okay.
I mean, you can see the numbers, I mean, that, the buyout makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Any other questions?
And these rates that we pay for health insurance and for retirement, are those fixed by the state? Or do we have any negotiating power, I guess, as a town in terms of the rates that we pay?
With the state retirement system, no. The retirement system sets the rates. With the health insurance, we belong to the health trust as do, I think, most of the municipalities in New Hampshire. It's, we've in the past gone out to private insurance to see if their rates would be any better, but they really aren't. There are different plans within the health trust that we could look at if the board wanted me to try to look at reducing these costs.
I'm only thinking about this, I know, right now I'm in open enrollment for my plan, right? It's like I've got a high deductible plan or I have like a PPO plan that I can choose from that costs significantly more. And so I guess, when was the last time that we reevaluated the plan that we are included in?
Well, I know, I know we changed it since I've been here. So maybe that was five or six years ago?
Okay.
We also, we also used to have employees that were what we called grandfathered, where they paid a different contribution or no contribution to their health insurance. And we slowly phased that out. And that change, I think, took place over four years.
Okay, and so do current employees pay a portion of their healthcare expenses?
People with a single plan do not pay anything. And then people, employees with a two-person or a family plan pay 25% of the difference between either one of those plans and a single plan.
Okay, so they are paying a portion?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, to me, it seems like, you know, this being one of our single biggest expenses in our budget, that, you know, perhaps it makes sense to periodically reevaluate the, the plan options to see if there's something that could potentially benefit us. I don't know how the other committee members feel about that suggestion.
Wouldn't hurt to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I concur that I think it's good to, it's good to reevaluate it. I don't think it's going to be very fun to look through all those options, but it's something we've got to do. I know from having done that sort of thing in the past, it's just a slog. There's also some very robust spreadsheets here, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
Do you have any updates on the status of, of the daily process?
We are waiting on DOT. We.
This is a recording?
Yeah, we pitched them a plan, an alternate plan to make the route 125 because they still had not weighed in on whether or not they were going to require a left turn lane. The Mr. Daley's engineer proposed just widening the shoulder and making a passing lane. But they haven't decided whether they're going to accept that or not. So we decided to pitch them an alternative plan, which would be temporary and would use Buzzalane to get in and out of the building. That's the road off of George Bennett.
Is there an issue with that being unpaved?
I mean, it's not ideal, but quite frankly, in a town like Lee, there are people who live on unpaved roads and love them, so it's not unheard of.
I think if a person had to choose driving on a dirt road to get to do your town business versus standing outside of the town clerk's office in snow, trying to get your business done, I think I would choose the dirt road.
Someone had mentioned that Steve, well, yeah, 125 is probably a bigger issue. Someone had mentioned that it would be hard for Steve to plow.
Oh, he wouldn't be plowing it.
Oh, okay, fixes that problem?
We would not be plowing it.
Okay.
Do we know what the holdup is with the DOT? Is it, I mean, is there a possibility that they're not going to approve this?
I'm told that DOT just takes a certain amount of time to do things.
Not necessarily that they're not excited about approving it, it's just going to take.
Right, they just have a certain amount of time that they are willing to spend on it.
Can we do the Buzzalane part and just get the building open and get started?
We still have to have DOT approve it.
Oh.
I tried that route last night. I was shot down.
Is this because we're a municipality or is this just?
It's, DOT is considering it a change in use.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter what it was?
Well, it was an office building before and it's going to be an office building again. So I don't, I mean, I, I can't explain it because I personally don't understand it.
But now you're an office building with customers?
Yeah, it's possible that the difference is that the public is going to be going to the building.
Yeah.
Karen's already put me in touch with the DOT guy to deal with the issue because when the town hall goes from being an office structure to being a function structure, that's a change of purpose and we have to go to them for approval, so.
Yeah, I mean, can they give us a date range? You know, the cable company will be there six weeks to 12 weeks? I mean, something like that? Or is it just, and eventually, eventually doesn't this impede? You know, can the DOT just keep you hanging indefinitely? I mean, they, they don't have just infinite power to delay things, do they? Or is that how things work?
I'm sure that there's a regulation somewhere that says how long they have to review a driveway permit.
Okay.
But it's, it could be 120 days.
Okay, so.
I guess the fact that we're in a, in the COVID situation doesn't help.
I have tried that argument every time I've spoken to them. And.
Clearly, it hasn't been a huge success.
Right, it doesn't seem to have gotten me anywhere.
Would a Board of Selectmen like to write a letter to whoever the person is in charge of the DOT at the state level and say, "We're trying to move our municipality and keep our citizens safe and this should be, this should be expedited with, you know, all haste and so on"?
Someone actually called the DOT commissioner and that filtered down to District 6 and it didn't go over well.
Okay.
No name.
So that only gets us. So that, that only gets us bureaucratic ire, is asking for...
Yeah.
All right.
Unfortunately, and believe me, I, I've been the most vocal about it, I think, of anyone working here, but it's just, there is not, there really isn't anything we can do about it.
So the DOT guys got pissed that someone went above them, and now they're going to make you wait.
Well, that's supposedly not what's happening.
No, okay.
They would never do that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm all set.
Me too.
Julie, I have, I have a question, not necessarily related to this, but just on your email that you sent out earlier today about, you know, any questions about data that we might be interested in seeing. Sorry, I wasn't able to get back to you, but we had gotten a spreadsheet from Scott earlier this week, and that allowed us to kind of do some sorting and whatnot in terms of the line items in the budget. And so, there's a few things that are kind of cross-division expenses that we see, you know, multiple times. And I'm just curious, you know, do we have, like, for office supplies, a, like a preferred provider for office supplies? Or a contractor? Do each division get to go out and kind of...
Well, we get, I mean, we get municipal, we get municipal pricing, so that, you know, we work with Staples and WB Mason.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've talked about in the past whether it would make any sense to combine forces, and it never seemed to make any difference in terms of the prices that we were going to get. Plus, certainly in this building, we're limited in terms of the amount of storage we have. So, you know, while we might be able to find a great deal if we ordered 100 cases of paper, you know, we wouldn't have anywhere to put it. So.
So you're saying that we do have kind of a preferred supplier, but we're under no obligation to use those?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We also, on a number of things, any number of things, can buy using the state contract. And the state goes out to bid on a lot of things, and so we can use the state pricing without having to go out to bid ourselves.
So which line items, just off the top of your head, do we use that option for?
I think the WEX, the fuel, is under a state program, for example.
Okay.
It's more, the elevator inspection, for example, is one. If we wanted to buy, whether cruisers are under the state bid. Those are the ones that come immediately to mind.
Okay.
And let me just bring to your attention, so the overall budget at this time with all the changes is 6.51%, is that correct?
Something like that, yes.
I guess the ABC has work cut out.
Well, again, that's why, you know, I emphasize that the changes in the personnel budget are 53% of the overall increase, so.
Personnel?
Yep. But that's true of, I, I don't want to say that's true of any company, but it's definitely true of municipalities.
Okay, at this point.
Oh, I was going to say, Julie, can you run through for the ABC the, the budget that just ended 2021, excuse me, 2020? And how much money is in the unassigned fund balance?
I think when we looked at that, there was about $215,000 going back to the unassigned fund balance from fiscal '20.
Which brought the unassigned fund balance up to what, 2.2, I think?
2.2 million, yep.
Yep. And then that 2.2, what is it, 125 is assigned to the Daly Building effort?
Yes, yes, but the 100, the 2.2 does not include the $100,000 that we got in Gopher money.
That's true. Well, didn't that include some of the money that went to the public safety people, or not?
It was a, that was a different grant.
That was a different grant, okay.
It was different.
I think it's just important to find out, to remember what all the ins and outs are in terms of what, so.
Can you be, tell us any details on the Gopher money?
You mean, what comprised the $104,000?
Yeah, who applied for it and...
I applied for it with some input from the department heads. So the feds gave the state of New Hampshire 1.25 billion.
Yeah.
And then the governor decided how to divvy it up using the governor's office, governor's office of something relief and recovery. I don't know why, I can never remember what Gopher stands for, but I think it's Governor's Office of Emergency Relief and Recovery. So they decided that a certain chunk of the money was going to go to municipalities, and they used some formula to decide how much everybody was going to get, and we were allocated $104,310, along with a whole lot of rules, confusing rules, conflicting rules, and changing rules over what we could seek reimbursement for.
You mean, over and above the 100 and, over and above what we got, or out of that money?
The 104, there were a lot of rules with how, how we could spend the money. So out of the 104, about 4,000 of it were actual reimbursements for things like cleaning supplies, PPE, costs, you know, the Zoom, the Adobe signing program, some laptops for remote work. So actual costs that were out of pocket was about 4,000 and change. After a lot of back and forth, the, and remember, this all comes from federal, it's federal money, so it's federal rules, so it's the Department of Treasury that made the rules. And ultimately, the Department of Treasury allowed us to seek reimbursement for payroll and benefit costs for first responders and the health officer. And that was the bulk, that was about $100,000, which was money that we'd already budgeted for. But they allowed us to seek a reimbursement for it. So. Probably sounds like it doesn't make any sense, probably doesn't, but that's what they let us do. And it was good that they let us do that, because if we could not come up with 100,000 more dollars in actual expenses, we were going to lose the money, because there was a deadline of October 15th to apply for the money, so. That's why 100,000 of it goes into the unassigned fund, well, all of it goes into the unassigned fund balance. But 100,000 isn't actually reimbursing us, because we budgeted for those expenses.
Julie, anything you can share with the ABC about the FairPoint issue?
Well, not really.
Okay.
Other than the decision is, you know, it's a public court case. So for many, many years, municipalities in New Hampshire have been fighting FairPoint over the value of the right-of-way in terms of assessing them for tax purposes. And it rounded its way, test cases rounded its way through the court, ultimately to the New Hampshire Supreme Court, which just handed down a decision that is not favorable to the municipalities. And so, since 2011, FairPoint has been filing abatement requests with us that we have been denying while all of this found its way through the court system. So we will now have to work out with FairPoint what we want to do about their abatement requests, knowing that the New Hampshire Supreme Court didn't really side with the municipalities.
Do you have any information about the three towns? Are they going to appeal this, or?
I, I don't, I don't know where they'd appeal it to. I don't know that it, I don't know that it's a federal case.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
So are we going to have to pay, like, interrears for the abatements that we had previously denied?
Possibly.
Do we know how much that would potentially be?
Uh, we have an idea, but I kind of prefer not to say it right now, because we, this decision from the New Hampshire Supreme Court is very new, so the attorneys are still working out the ramifications for the towns that have just been waiting. We were not one of the test cases. The test, test towns were Hanover, Durham, and Belmont, so they actually lost in court.
Can I ask a question about, and I know traditionally, our legal expenses have been quite substantial. So you don't see anything coming up that is going to consume more than the 15,000?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
But, who knows?
Yeah, who knows? Who knows?
It's still 2020. You know?
A lot could happen.
Great, there's still six weeks left of 2020.
And can you remind me, there is a, we did a, I don't know, what do you call it, a thing with Market Basket? And that was only good until the next full evaluation, is that correct?
No, we're, we're, we're settled with FairPoint.
No, 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 Market Basket.
Yeah, Market Basket. Yeah, we're, we're done with that.
So it was capped, but isn't it only capped until the next revow?
Well, their assessment changed.
Yeah. But I thought it was, it was supposed to be stagnant for a period of time, and then it was going to be reevaluated or something.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. I'm just looking for a more evaluation, so I can get more taxes. Not on my house, thank you very much.
Right.
In my backyard.
Yeah, John, that would go over well if the Selectmen's properties were exempt from valuation. That would be interesting.
That'd be big time, wouldn't it?
Yeah, everybody would want to be a Select person then.
So Stacy, you started to, it sounds like you started to ask for some data set, and then I don't know whether you finished that request.
Uh, no, it's not really data that I was looking at. I was just wondering if we have, you know, like, these preferred providers or vendors where we can get some beneficial, you know, fees associated with those contracts? And I think, you know, you explained it, you know, well for a few of those. I'm just thinking, where else might we be able to apply that same, you know, same thinking? And, you know, I'm thinking, like, we heard about cellphone reimbursements. So I'm wondering, you know, like, does the town have a cellphone plan where we issue cellphones instead of issuing reimbursements, perhaps? Or if that's something that's been considered? So there's a few line items that I was...
I don't, yeah, I don't know that it would, I think before I got here, there were more employees that had town-issued cellphones. But I, we started to get away from that. Most people don't want to carry two cellphones.
Yeah.
And you really, yeah, so, and it's $30 a month is the reimbursement.
Okay.
I don't know.
And it's maximum $30?
Yep.
Okay.
So I, the police chief and I think his lieutenant maybe have a town-provided phone. But for anybody else, it's just a reimbursement.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's going to be hard to beat that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was worried that, like, okay, we're just, you know, paying everybody's phone, my family plan for $160, but that's not the case, obviously.
Nope.
Only the Selectmen.
Is there any, is there any news on the development around the circle, speaking of new properties to be taxed?
Oh, yeah.
No, they're waiting for the water line.
They're still waiting. There's no news on when that's going in?
I think it has to be...
Romans build aqueducts in less time.
I think it has to be finished by next September.
But have they gotten all the approvals so they can go buy that property and all that?
Last I knew, they still had to get some easements from property owners. It's still working.
If they don't get them, what are they going to do? Like, go across the street, go down there, come back over, you know, if they don't?
I don't know. It's, I mean, it's weirdly, it's in Lee, but it's not our project. It's being paid for by the state, and it's Durham's water line. So.
Yeah, how would that work, Julie? Could they take it by eminent domain?
Oh, that would be crazy. That rarely works out well for the municipality.
Well, we have Durham. Other water source, like the other side that we can...
I don't think Durham would do it.
Tap into?
No, there's no...
Where do all, where does Market Basket and all them get their water?
Wells, same as everybody else, except for Thurston Woods.
But they wouldn't do that for that new development? If for some reason, they can't get this to happen?
They wouldn't do what?
Dig a well, have it...
No, that's what started this whole thing. The wells in that area are contaminated with NTPE.
From the gas station, if you remember.
Oh, yeah, the great guy that is right there on the left, yeah, or on the right as you go out.
Used to be in the mobile station.
Yeah, the old one.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the little rundown one.
No.
No. Mick and Herb's?
Yeah.
Now.
So are there any other questions about the budget?
Julie, for the, for the Daly Building, could you please add some separate line items for the heat expense? I know that you've put it on as $50,000 as kind of a lump sum, but it would be helpful.
I personally wouldn't recommend that we do that at this point. I'm not sure, no. I don't, I don't know where, what, what would that gain us?
I'm just thinking mostly for the future. So we can track it.
I mean, we can track it.
If you don't think it's a good idea, that's okay.
I mean, we get...
I'm not married to it.
All of the bills get put into our Tyler software system, and so in other words, I could run a report that would show you all of the heating bills paid for the Daly Building.
Okay.
In other words, I can run a report by plugging in this number that's been assigned to the Daly Building and come up with every single check that's been issued for that account.
Okay.
So.
So what?
Department.
So we, we will be able to track the expenses that way.
Okay, you just don't want to break that up into separate budgets now, because we don't really know what it will be.
We don't really know, right. We don't really know what everything, or, you know, maybe we'll never get into the building. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Julie, did I hear you say that, that the word, the build-out is all done?
Yeah, sure.
So if we could settle the traffic issue, we could move right in, essentially?
Yeah, the only thing that's still, the only big thing that still has to happen, and I'm told it's going to happen next week, is the paving in the back of the building. But, you know, other than putting up some signs, we're, the building's ready. It's been ready. So.
Are we done?
Anything else? Let's go.
I mean, again, offer always stands. If anybody has any other questions, feel free to get ahold of me, send me an email. If you need more data, just let me know.
Wow, we have a, now that it's a Board of Selectmen meeting again, you have any issues or things that you need to deal with, Julie?
Tom, do we need to do minutes first?
Can we do that quick?
Yep.
We'd turn it back over.
Got those minutes I sent you from the 10th?
Yes.
Everybody agree? They're good to go?
Yes, I moved to approve the minutes that were sent out for our last meeting on November 10th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do roll call.
Do we have to?
Yes.
Okay. Cord Lundquist, aye. Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yep.
Stacy Waits?
Aye.
Pat Barber?
Aye.
Pat Bugbee?
Yes.
Tom Murdock, aye. Who else?
Nobody.
Nobody.
That's it.
That's it. Passes.
Yes.
You don't get the vote, Harry.
I just didn't know you were now with us.
I've been here for a while.
Okay.
He's been lurking.
Hide it hidden. All right. Back to you, John.
Thanks. Thanks. You have anything else, Julie?
No. Can we just find out if Mr. Brown's alone or, or with somebody, so we can put that in the minutes, too?
I am alone.
Okay.
Mr. Brown is alone, and he's present. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.